Well, good morning and welcome to City Hall. We'll get started with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Brad Cromwell is the chaplain at Hobby Lobby and he'll lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Pettis if he'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Would everybody please stand?
Let's pray. Dear God, thank you so much for this day. Thank you for this new year and for new beginnings. God, I thank you for our city councilmen and all the work they put in and the sacrifice that they put in. And I thank you that we live in a city that's known for our love, our love for each other and our love for you. God, I pray that you be with the council today as they make decisions that impact so many people and give them wisdom and guidance, be with their families. And again, God, may we be a city that reflects your love and just be for, live for you. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call the meeting to order and move quickly on to item four, which is the Journal of Council Proceedings. I'll look for a motion on item 4A, which is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for December 31st, and item B, to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for December 17th. All right, comments or questions on the Journal? All right, cast your votes. And it passes unanimously. And that moves us on to item five, which is requests for uncontested continuances.
And this morning?
All right. Anybody else have any? Hearing none. Let's process the council meeting. Convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are five items.
Yes.
All right, comments or questions on the MFA? All right, cast your votes. And it passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC-MFA. Convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. We have the claims and payroll on the agenda.
Move the item.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC-PPA. Convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. And again, the claims and payroll only.
Move the item.
Cast your votes. And it passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCEAT. Re-convene the council meeting with the consent docket. All right, are there any individual considerations?
There are.
Okay.
A V, a six, M1, and some associated projects with it. And N1 as well.
All right, Pat, item M1.
This is a project having to do with some, my papers, I'm sorry, I didn't organize. On the N1, the, we're doing some sidewalk projects here, and it shows that we are going to be responsible for the maintenance. Is that true in this particular case?
Well, it's true that the federal government will not.
Federal government's going to provide maintenance?
No.
They're not going to provide.
They're not providing.
So the maintenance is not going to be the city's responsibility?
What's that?
Will the city have responsibility for that?
I'm pretty sure we have to, we have to assume that responsibility when these sidewalks are, to get the federal dollars.
So we, we have a dual standard then as far as maintenance of sidewalks?
I think that.
If we put them in, the city puts them in, then the property owner is responsible for the maintenance. If we have federal money, then we are responsible.
I believe that's correct.
Thank you.
And item N1, Pat?
Excuse me, Your Honor.
That's all right. It's the out of clearance page.
I just had a question. The purpose is this lease of a hangar site? Are we leasing a site or a hangar?
Item N1, is that for the site or is that for the site and hangar?
That's for the actual site, and then individuals build their own facility. And if it's a, in this particular one, lease of hangar for sites.
We had several in here this week.
Yes, this is a renewal for that, for that particular site. The individual builds their own hangar, and then they lease the ground from the airport trust.
Okay, so all the hangars out of page are private property then?
The, the facilities themselves, the structure themselves are owned by the actual owner of the hangar.
Okay, thank, that's, thank you. Clear.
Hey, do you have the comments on the consent docket? We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Nothing on the concurrents docket, so that moves us on to item eight. First is a public hearing. This is regarding the foster project we're working on with dogs and cats at our animal shelter. Second time it's been in front of council. Is there anyone here today hoping to speak on this item?
Move the item.
All right, cast your votes. And item 8A moves forward. Item 8B is an opportunity for us to learn more about the MAPS3 park project.
Thank you. Mary Margaret Jones is here from Hargraves &amp; Associates to go through the presentation on this. This has been in works for a long time, and as Mary Margaret's coming up, I do want to take this opportunity to update you on an adjacent project, and that's the Boulevard that's going on. I just want to, I met with ODOT last week and want to let you know that, if you don't know, we talked about it, that West Section, Section 5, we call it, the area west of Western, is complete and is now open. The East Section, which is called Contract 1, which gets you off of the east side of the turnpike down to about Oklahoma, that has been awarded. Construction should begin this month on that segment of it. The next segment is Segment 2, which is underneath the railroad and in the Gaylord area. Gaylord has to be lowered at that point in time. That one's about to go out to bid shortly. That leaves you Sections 3 and 4, which is the area that we had the controversy about or discussion about last year. And there will be a public meeting either later this month or early February on that, with a second meeting probably occurring 60 days after that. And then based upon those, that input, they anticipate designing that through the summer and fall and putting it out to bid late '14 to begin construction in '15 on those two segments. So we lost about a year on it. I think that's going to, that's going to blend and dovetail quite frankly very well into what Mary Margaret's going to tell us this morning.
Jim, could I just ask a quick question about the lowering part of it?
Uh huh.
Is the streetcar designed to go underneath that bridge with the lowering?
David, the streetcar, if we talked about putting that through the, down the Boulevard, was that going to be accommodated in the?
I mean, I wasn't sure that we'd completely firmed up.
Is what accommodated? The streetcar under the BNSF railroad at, at the Boulevard, is that going to be anticipated?
Yes, yes, that's already been anticipated. In fact, early on, they did studies to look for foundations and make sure how low that that could be lowered and, and check the height so that the cantonaries could go underneath it. So yes, that's been anticipated.
I just want to make sure we're paying attention.
Just, Jim, I have a question. The actual, all the construction then should be completed by what, late 2015?
That's correct.
And the boulevard will be open for traffic then?
Yeah, I hate to put ODOT in a corner like that, but that's generally the goal at this time.
I like to put them in a corner.
I appreciate that. And you can, I won't.
Jim, would you go over, the West One is open right now?
Yes.
And that is an excellent, excellent ingress and ingress into the city.
Right.
I hate to publicize it because this morning, I think I had two competitors on it. But the citizens should take a look at that because it's a great way to get into downtown. The East portion, okay, that you're talking about?
Mm-hmm.
The connection down to Oklahoma?
Mm-hmm.
When is it supposed to be done by? Do you have a feel for that?
They told me a date, I don't recall, recall, I'd have to, I've got it written down in my office, but I don't recall exactly when it is. They're supposed to begin construction this month? I don't remember the duration of that project.
But the same philosophy would be used there, that when the construction is complete, even though this downtown linkage is not even in engineering design yet, they're going to open that up for folks?
You know, it'll just terminate on Oklahoma at that point in time. And that's a fairly extensive project because there's a lot of bridge work on that today that has to be done. Whereas the western side, we're using the existing, the existing abaintments that touch in that area. So this is going to be a more extensive project on that eastern side of the.
And then the total Boulevard, you're looking for completion by late '15?
That's what Mr. Ryan said.
Okay. Pat Ryan.
And Mayor, as Mary Margaret's coming up, I think it would be great to recognize Tom McDaniel, who's the chairman of our MAPS Oversight Committee, MAPS3 Oversight Committee, and has been doing a wonderful job, and Kim Lowe, who is on the MAPS Oversight Board and chairman of the Park Subcommittee.
Good morning, Mary Margaret. Welcome to town.
Thank you. Happy to be here. It was a little bit of an adventure getting here. I started a day early to make sure I got here. So I'm going to run through a pretty thorough but brief presentation of the entire process. And so the first thing I want to highlight that you see on this slide is that we are a team. We are leading this team, but this team has very important members, including local members like Mr. Gardner Architects and Johnson &amp; Associates, I know they're represented here today, as well as national experts in economics, park economics, parks governance, and parks maintenance. So it was not just a design effort, it was also an effort to figure out the logistics of how we make a park like this work, how we build it, how we make it work. So these are the topics that I'll cover today. Notice I will be showing you the river edge conceptual ideas. That's not presented for approval. The rest of this is presented for approval. So we start with the design, and we start by remembering what we heard from the public. And remember, we went through an extensive public process, and I have met with most of you, all of you, as we've gone through this process. And we heard loud and clear that the public wanted lots of things to do. They wanted that program of things to do to be distributed throughout the park from downtown to the river, but they wanted the park to change in character somewhat as it reached the river, so that closest to downtown is the most active, and as you get toward the river, it's the most natural. We heard, "Give us lots of shade." We heard, "Let us have big performances," as you see here on the Great Lawn. These are, there are many ways that this park can be different from Marriott Gardens. And that's what we heard over and over again, was be complimentary. So while Marriott Gardens is of a certain size, this at a much larger size can give us places for larger gatherings and places for real respite in the city into a natural environment and a lake that one can actually play on with paddle boats, et cetera. So you see in the north, the upper park, as you see in this image, you see the Big O Oval, the Great Lawn, that can hold 10,000 to 20,000 people. You see urban gardens. You see senior play areas, if you will, for senior wellness. You see places for kids. You see activities along the lake edge. You see activities in gardens and recreation along Robinson. And you see an integrated Union Station with things to do at Union Station. And probably most importantly at the, not most importantly, but one of the important features is the relationship to the Boulevard. So we're very pleased that it seems like the timing of the two projects will work, so that this 100% corner, as we call it, at the Boulevard and Robinson, can be this plaza with this civic fountain, a real gesture of connection to the Civic Center, to the city downtown, to Chesapeake, to all the activities of downtown. Then as you move, sure.
You mentioned Union Station, I think is a really asset to that facility. But in the, in the report itself, it talked about a separate budget, that not including the park budget?
Well, we do believe that in the park budget, we can do the things that are most important to activating Union Station right away. In other words, the two iconic big rooms, we can take those on as part of the budget and clear them out and restore them to their grandeur and so that people can start having weddings and events and using Union Station. Whether we can fully restore within the budget every aspect of the back part of Union Station, we're not sure yet, but we can definitely do what's needed in the budget to activate it and make it a part of the park.
Is that, is the design of that facility, redesign of that facility underway now?
Only in a master plan sense, only as much as we have done for testing spaces. And in terms of space fit, it works very well, and I'll address that a little bit.
Okay.
So then the lower park, again, the more naturalistic part of the park, reaches to the river, incorporates or relates to Manuel Perez Park. We had great meetings with those constituents to just, to talk about ways we can make it a better park and make it related to this park. And wetlands and gardens that respond to the river edge, places to play, a lot of places to play in this park, this, this lower part of the park, and uses that will relate to the Latino Community Center as well. So we walk through the park with these images. You've all seen these images, but this is the 100% corner with the civic fountain. You see the Great Lawn in the background. You see the shade structure that's part of the café in the background. You see the stage in the background. Whereas the other corner, that was Robinson and the Boulevard, this is the Boulevard and the west edge of the park, and you see entering into a very different environment, a woodland environment. Again, you see the, the performance lawn in the background, but it's a very shady, welcoming environment. Now, as you're in the park, you're on the hill, you're looking back toward the city, and it really is revealed as this sort of front yard for the city. And looks, will work when there's 100 people and will work when there's 10,000 people. And that's the idea. Notice the two pieces of architecture that are very integrated into the park design. It's important that any structures in the park support the park and be park activators. It's also important that they take their cues from the vernacular architecture of the place. This needs to be a park that's specific to Oklahoma City that couldn't be in the other place. And you can see some of the inspirational images for those pieces of architecture in the park. And then turning around on that hill and looking toward Union Station, you see the pond, people playing on the pond, the bridge over the pond, and a more pastoral setting and the beauty of Union Station. One of the key components of the park is the Boulevard, is the promenade, sorry, the promenade connection from downtown to Skydance Bridge, as you see here, and then to the river. Making that a real feature with this, these beautiful art lights, lights that work in the day and capture sunlight in the day and then are illuminated at night, benches that inspire interaction, beautiful paving, and then it continues and flows into the more passive lower park and to the river. So the planting is another way that this park is specific to Oklahoma City and is about this landscape. Notice something very important, the limited use of lawn. It's important that we have lawn where we want big events, but it's important that we have a majority of the park being lower water-using and more native plants, if you will. It's important to be able to bike at two speeds, so we've addressed the different speeds of biking. We've addressed different levels of pedestrian path and movement, places for spokesies and bike rentals, and then the major promenade connecting to the river trails. So there's all these different levels of circulation that are important to consider. And we got lots of feedback from constituent groups on bicycles, et cetera. And then parking, and this becomes a major, could be a major source of revenue for the park, that the parking surrounding the park, first of all, on the streets can adequately support the park in a normal day-to-day usage. Obviously, for big events with 10,000 people, there will need to be parking and shuttles and manage, a managed system. But on a day-to-day basis, there really is adequate parking that we can design as edges to the park that in a way become integral to the park and buffers for kids chasing balls out of the park into the street, that, that zone of parking becomes a good buffer. And it really supports the users of the park. And you can see some of that parking is parallel, and some of that parking is perpendicular to the park, allowing tailgate, if you will, unloading of picnic supplies, et cetera, et cetera. Sustainability was one of our major goals, capturing storm water, capturing solar, wind energy, creating lots of shade, and adaptively reusing components of the site where possible, including many of the large trees on the site and Union Station, as we discussed before. Water being such a key issue here, we have, we have an approach that will feed the lake and have us be an integrated system and whole system in terms of our water use. So, schedule and phasing. This shows you the diagrams of the different phases of work. Obviously, the master plan embraces the whole park, upper and lower park. Phase 1, almost a $10 million, Phase 1, gives us the Great Lawn, the Big O event space, gives us the, the edge to the Boulevard and the edge to Boulevard, to Robinson, and the connection to Skydance Bridge. Those are key components for creating early activity, early revenue, and making connections to streetscape improvements that will be happening otherwise. Then Phase 2 completes the upper park, as you see, and Phase 3 completes the lower park by 2021. And the schedule you see here outlined, again dovetailing well with the Boulevard's schedule as we heard earlier. And you can see how we're approaching, using the site in a very sustainable way even in Phase 1, going ahead and beginning the excavation for the pond and using that dirt to create the event lawn. So we're balancing cut and fill, if you will, to the best possible on the site, making all those connections, having early occupation of the site. And you can see that in Phase 2, some of the components of Phase 1 get completed. So remind people when Phase 1 is built that a grand civic fountain will come, but it's not quite there yet. And this gives you an aerial view of the area that will be built in Phase 1. And you notice there's not yet a café and there's not yet a civic fountain, but there are places for those. So like I said earlier, this isn't just about design, this is about how we make it work. And it's really important when we think about operating a park to remember that operating a park is not just about mowing the grass and doing the flowers and maintaining the trees. It is about programming, because it's programming events and activation that make a park successful. It's about fundraising and administration and security. We look at events as a very important part of a successful park. And these are other parks around the country, many of them are projects, and the number of event days per year. And you can see Discovery Green, for instance, in Houston, there's something going on almost every day of the year. Millennium Park in Chicago as well. So we're looking to strike the right balance, sort of in the mid-range of these relevant examples. So you think about it as seasonal use of the park. And you think about it through the phases and what our O&M budget projections are through the phases. So Phase 1, we see being about $1 million a year in O&M costs. And then you see Phase 2 and Phase 3. By Phase 3, it's up to 3.3 million per year in O&M costs. Now, how does that compare? That compares to other parks right sort of in the middle, which is really appropriate for being a large park. Again, it won't be as maintenance-intensive as, say, Marriott Gardens, which is smaller and therefore requires more upkeep and is so heavily used, but it is more maintenance than, say, a typical Oklahoma City Department of Parks facility. And this is how that O&M budget gets parsed out. So you can see that it's, again, it's not just about mowing grass, but it is about all the things it takes to make a park successful. And that's what's key, getting people here, getting people using it. So how do we structure a governance body or system for a park like this? We looked at around the country, different models, from public to private to in-between. And you see the in-between is circled here, if you will, and that is our recommendation, that this be a public-private partnership. It gives you lots of advantages. It makes it easier to raise money. It makes it easier to do some aspects of managing and maintaining the park, but it also allows you to use the city and the public for the things the city is best at, which might be, for instance, security. So it allows the right blending of resources. And we've even mapped out what that staff would be. Now, this is full staff by the end of Phase 3.
Excuse me, I'm going to interrupt you again.
Sure.
Have you shared this with Nancy Anthony at the Community Foundation?
I'm sorry, who?
Nancy Anthony at the Oklahoma City Community Foundation. They're working on a master plan for parks at St. John's.
We have, we have been working with parks. We've also been working with Marriott Gardens, and we worked throughout this process with the Alliance. We have not specifically touched base on their current master planning efforts that I am aware of, but we have in general talked about the dovetailing of those efforts. And we will continue to, because as that project advances, we will continue to want to check in with them. Sure. So again, Phase 1 would be a much smaller staff than this, and this is an ultimate staff. And you can see it's made up of contracted staff, part-time, full-time, et cetera. And I know Kim will, will remind us that her subcommittee has been very focused on that issue of conservancy and governance and maintenance and operations and funding. Okay, so how do we fund it? We know that it's a three-legged stool to fund these kinds of parks, and one leg is public funding, one leg is earned income, and one leg is private funding. And we have to look to all those sources. And we have to look at how they change over time, because initially, the park will need more government funding as philanthropic efforts ramp up and as earned income ramps up. And long-term, as in income from real estate, bid-type structures ramps up. So it changes over time. So one of the first ways we look at, at revenue, one of the big early-on revenue generators will be large events. We look at what else there is in the city for large events, and we look at other cities and their populations and what those populations support in terms of sizes of large events. And you see here the, the events up to about 20,000 people are appropriate for relevant examples. And then we look at the number of those events per year. And we're being very conservative in all these projections because we think that's very important, to not sell you a bill of goods, but to be very conservative. So we're thinking only five, whereas you can see in some of these other cities, 15, 12, even up to 30 in Dallas. But we think five is the right goal, starting out, and Phase 1 even just two, but five big events a year, and Phase 1, two events a year, as you see here. And this breaks down how the income from those events works. So you can see you get income from sponsorship, merchandise, beverage, food, admissions, lawn rental. And you can see the 110,000 to 450,000 a year change over time as we go up to five events a year. So those are big events. Then we also look at events that could bring in 50,000 to 120,000 a year that are more mid-scale, if you will. For instance, you had a conference of mayors here. Imagine an event in the park for something like that, our graduations, our Thunder Alley, for instance. And then moving down the scale, smaller sources of income will come from facilities in the park, Union Station. Now, we have not built those income generation possibilities into our budget. Again, we're being conservative. Those could be really big. So that would really add to these numbers, but we haven't built them in yet, we didn't want to presume yet. But café, membership programs can bring in a lot of revenue for the park, and in return, people can get free movies or 10% off at the café, et cetera. So we look at our need for money, which we've outlined, and we've looked into what earned income and philanthropy we believe can do, and you see a shortfall in all phases. So we look at how to close that shortfall. So one of the first things we look at is parking. That adjacent parking that I outlined, if that, if that metered income comes to the park, it makes a big chunk out of that, takes a big chunk out of that difference. If we set up a district parking system that brings in income, particularly during event parking, that makes an even bigger difference in closing that gap, makes a lot of, a lot of movement toward closing that gap. And then if we look long-term at a bid, and this is something we worked on with the Alliance, we've presumed here, one big presumption is that all the bid income would come to the park. That may not be the case, but that's our, our presumption at this point. But we, otherwise, this is very conservative. It's assuming a quarter mile, 1.5 FAR. We've taken out service costs and we're using $2,013. And you can see that by year 30, this could bring in 3.9 million a year to the park if it all came to the park. It probably won't all come to the park, but that's what it could do. And if it all came to the park, we would exceed our needs in terms of, of O&M budget projections. So you can see there's a wide range of opportunities there, from which to draw as we move forward. And it will be finding the right balances of all of those that will be key going forward. Okay, quickly, a couple of words on Union Station. It is a jewel. It has an iconic historic front and a less historically significant back. That back warehouse has lots of potential good uses, though, ranging from, you know, bike repair, which is transportation-related, to bike rental, to park maintenance, to fitness centers, yoga classes, ceramics classes, all kinds of things could happen in those back spaces because they're very open and big and allow that kind of use. And then the front spaces, weddings, restaurant, visitor center, a beer garden, are the kinds of things that our market study has shown would be. of things that our market study has shown would be great uses of Union Station. And there are lots of examples around the country and even the world for how those big spaces can be used in a multiplicity of ways, and then how the smaller spaces can be used. And in particular, we think that the artisanal beer production in Oklahoma City is a great thing to pull from, and a beer garden is a great idea in this space. And then finally, we want, over and over again, we were asked by the public, but how is this connecting to the river? You know, the actual site, as you see here, note that boundary, the boundary of the downtown park, doesn't actually touch the river edge. So we were asked over and over again, please look at how this could relate to a revitalized river. So this is not part of the master plan for the park, but it is important to look at it in an integral way. So we've done that, we were asked to do that. And it's important because of all the initiatives that are happening up and down the river, and thinking about this as part of that system is important. And to think of the trail system as a loop is very important. So you can imagine somebody coming by boat from the boathouse, getting off at the river here, coming up to the park and having lunch, getting on a spooky, getting back on their boat and going back to the boat, sir. We have a couple of options. We are putting them both out there at this point. There is lots of work to be done with the Corps of Engineers and others going forward, but this is inspirational and aspirational and is based on reality in terms of our experience of doing river parks all over the country. So these are doable, but there are two different kinds, two different approaches. This one creates an island, because we thought it would be really cool to have a very different experience on this river than you have anywhere else on the river, going out over a bridge to an island. In both schemes, we're looking at a river lawn, we're looking at shade trees, we're looking at a café, and we're looking at boathouse, and we're looking at parking. So in both schemes, we're getting down to the river, touching the river, and creating different kinds of river-edge experiences, and looking at creating that energy, carrying that energy from the park out to the river. So this is the island scheme. And then this is a scheme that, instead of creating an island, creates a river lawn that comes right down to the river edge. In both cases, terraces down to the river, natural river slopes, and boat launches down at the river, and a high-speed bicycle movement, if you will, in the blue, and a lower speed promenade and biking and little kids biking kind of speed in red closer to the river's edge. So you see that as a different approach. And those two, the differences between those approaches would really be something to work on with the Corps of Engineers. And that shows you, in either case, how the whole vision can be cohesive and pulled together and an asset for the river and for downtown. So with that, oh, I have a few precedent images. I'll just go through these quickly. Chattanooga, the idea of touching the river's edge in an urban way, a boating way. And in Louisville, touching that river in both ways, naturalistic way and a way with plazas and terraces. And in both those cases, those parks flood. These are parks that are flood-able. That's the whole idea. You embrace the river, you create a bioengineered edge, and you exist as part of the river. And then the idea of boats and beaches and cafés and decks. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Questions for Mary Margaret and her team? All right, how about comments?
The only comment I would make is, it's really interesting to see a recognition of the dry weather we typically have in Oklahoma and attempting to use natural water to build the pond, refill the pond. I think that's pretty thoughtful, very thoughtful.
I just appreciate so much how you've incorporated, over the period of time that you've been working with us, the comments from the citizens. You can just see how this is built into something that is very specifically Oklahoma. And there were fears early on that it might not be so, and I really appreciate the attention to the details. And this river's edge is as exciting as the rest of it.
Yeah, it is.
It really is the icing on the cake, I think, to be able to put this together. Thank you.
Another question, Your Honor. In Tulsa, they just opened up a new park. They had a public relations firm help put together a program to explain it to the citizen. Are we considering something like that as well?
It's a great idea.
I don't know if we're considering that, but we can certainly look into that.
Well, Renzi Stone, who has a public relations firm, was the one who worked in Tulsa introducing their park, Tulsa audience, population.
It's a great idea, and it's the kind of thing a conservancy can help bring to the table as a conservancy is formed.
With respect to the part of the park as it enters into the river area, if you use the island, does that interfere with the boating activities in any way?
It shouldn't. I mean, the bridge to the island, kayaks could still go under that, which would be very cool. And of course, the larger boats would be outside of that anyway. And it doesn't interfere with the larger boats, if that's part of your question.
Right. Well, with the activities that they have down there as far as racing and things like that. The island is an interesting concept, and I personally, I prefer the natural blending of the park into the river if possible. But anyway, this is all very exciting. Thank you.
How much we can achieve that natural edge versus some reinforcement of that edge will definitely be something to work through with the Corps of Engineers, but that would be our goal as well, and we've done it in other places. Bioengineered edges can work very well.
And I'm not so sure we have the same kind of potential flooding problems, since it's a series of ponds rather than a true living river.
It's true.
So. That's true, but the Corps of Engineers' sign-off will be important in any future down in that area. But that shouldn't be unachievable. You know, based upon what we've got, that, I mean, that'll take some time and effort, but it should not hinder any design options we choose.
Any other comments or questions from council? All right, Mary Margaret, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your work. And thanks also to the subcommittee, Kim and Tom. We appreciate all the work that you guys are doing on our behalf.
Here's a resolution.
So we need to approve the design of the master plan, and this has been through the subcommittee and the advisory board? We're getting head nods, way of a motion? All right, cast your votes, and that is approved by council unanimously. Thank you. On to item 8C. Understanding not in executive session today?
We do not.
All right, on to claims for denial, which is item 8D under your agenda. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 8D?
Your Honor, before we go to that, can I move to strike item C?
Okay. We'll vote on the motion to strike item C, and that item is struck. Okay? And do we have a motion on the rest? All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item nine is claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on this item? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And we're on to items from council. James, do you have anything for us today? All right, Larry?
Just an observation. I got to take my grandkids down and watch them skate on the Marriott, and, boy, it was just very popular. The kids were having a great time. I talked a little bit to some of the people that work in the vendor's location, and he said that the traffic had been excellent during the time. What a great amenity, and I guess it stays open, Jim, down at the month of January. And so I'd encourage people, take your kids down there, it's a great experience, a lot of fun. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thanks, Larry. David? Meg?
I just wanted to congratulate the Arts Council on a fantastic opening night. There were maybe 65,000 folks downtown at venues all over the central part of downtown. The Marriott Gardens was packed with people watching the ball rise in Oklahoma City and the fireworks. It was just a terrific evening, and I know how much work it is to accomplish that every year, and it just seems to get better and better with each year. So congratulations to Arts Council.
John? All right, Pat? All right, city manager reports.
As we go into 2014, and in fact, I thought this was going to be a fairly short council meeting, I thought it'd be a good time to update us on Maps for Kids. We're really accomplished a lot on Maps for Kids, and we want to highlight some of the accomplishments and then also what's in front of us here in 2014 and what you can expect in 2014. With that, Mr. Todd?
Pardon me, thank you for allowing me to give you this presentation. It's kind of easy to forget about what we're doing with Maps for Kids still, since we're talking about Maps 3 so much, but we are still actively working on Maps for Kids. And just real quick to remind you that the program at the beginning did $52 million worth of technology improvements, and that included the bond and the sales tax funds, technology upgrades. I can tell you that all the schools within the district have received new computers now, so all of them are working with the new technology. Phone systems, network, alarm systems, things like that. And then transportation that was done early on was a replacement of 160 buses, and at the time, it reduced the average age to two years. Quick reminder also that the suburban schools are receiving money. This is the map of the 23 different districts that are within Oklahoma City that have received funds through Maps for Kids. And this is a shot of a spreadsheet that shows you the balances for those funds that the suburban schools have. And you can see that a lot of them have spent all of their funds or essentially down to zero. And what we have really is, three different schools are controlling 96% to 97% of the remaining funds. So they've really used their funds well, and we're on a good path to spending all of those.
David, excuse me, do you have a time limit on when they have to have that money expended?
Yes, sir. They have to have an application in 2017, and they have three years to spend that. So essentially, it's till 2020 to spend the money. Pardon me again. Status, we've completed 57 projects. There was 45 early start roofing and fire alarm projects. That's the ones that were small projects that they started at the very beginning of the program. We have 13 schools under construction, and five of those are substantially complete or coming up for final acceptance here real soon, so 13 is a conservative number. And the only thing that we still have to do is the administration building project. What I probably should have put up there is, we also have a second phase of Emerson Alternative that we're going to be doing on that, but it's still part of the original plan. So here's the list of the completed schools. It includes high schools, a lot of elementary schools, there's a middle school in there. The bulk of the work that we're doing right now are middle schools, and that's because of the way they were scheduled in the program. Schools under construction, you can see those on the left. And then on the right is projects that weren't in the plan, per se. They were in the plan, but they were pulled out for one reason or another, usually because of change order issues, and it's work that was originally contemplated, but is being done as a second phase. So it's not actually a new phase or a new project, but you can see those on the right. And then the ones I've got bold in gold are actually to be bid in this first quarter of 2014, so I went ahead and included those as schools under construction. Other completed projects, as I mentioned before, the bus fleet, the technology, and you can see the list of all the projects that were completed within that technology And as I mentioned, the upcoming projects is just the administration billing that we're actively working with the district on, and then that second phase of Emerson Alternative. So I'd like to show you a few pictures here, well, several pictures here, of work that's ongoing. Now, this is a before shot at Oak Ridge Elementary, and there's the renovated space. And that's the work that we did. This is class in SAS before, and there's the classroom afterwards. This is Sequoia Elementary. This is the corridor right there by the main entry, and you can see that it's not in terrible shape, but the renovations that Maps for Kids did just added some color and really made it a good environment for learning. Here's Edwards Elementary. That's the entry to Edwards, and there's the new entry to Edwards. Interior shot of Edwards, this is right after they moved the furniture out and were starting construction, but you can see the general condition of the classroom, and this was the classroom after the renovation. Again, right at the beginning of construction, and then a completed renovation. This is the renovated media center before they'd moved all the books and things in. And here's the renovated administration area at Edwards Elementary. There's the corridor. So let's move on to Roosevelt Middle School. I apologize for the quality of this picture. It isn't real great and may not actually be fair, so to speak, but you can see the general condition of the floor and the walls, the color schemes and things. And then there's the renovated space, just prior to completion of stuff, to put the ceiling in. But what you're seeing are progress pictures that we received from our consultant. Roosevelt Middle School is the gymnasium as construction continues. Northeast Academy. This is a picture right after construction began, and again, it's not quite an exact representation of how the room looked, but you can see in general that a lot of the fixtures and things are tired and the floors in bad shape. And there's the renovated classroom. This is the cafeteria at Northeast as it existed when Maps for Kids arrived, and there's the renovated space. This is the small gym at Northeast Academy, a before picture, and there's the after picture. This is the large gym, Northeast Academy, before, and then after. You can see just what a difference, just different light, fixtures, and paint can do just to the overall ambiance of the space. This is the auditorium at Northeast Academy before, and there's after the renovation. This is a space that is during construction, but it wasn't a whole lot different, as I understand, because there wasn't a ceiling. And you can see the finishes on the wall, and this is the completed space after walls were moved and finishes were redone. Another shot at Northeast Academy, the classroom, and then the after renovations. Again, this is not a great quality picture, but you can generally see the conditions, and there's the science room after. And this is the commons area at Northeast before, and there's after. That's still kind of right at the tail end of construction. You can see there's still some activities going on. And there's, I believe, the administration area at Northeast after the renovation. So we'll move on to Rogers Middle School. This is a before picture. Again, you can see the general condition of the classroom, and then there's after, before, and after. This is still at Rogers. At Rogers, we replaced all the lockers, and you can see the work that's going on there. There's a new corridor with the new tile, new ceiling, new lockers. Another shot of the corridor. And this is the new gymnasium at Rogers Middle School. Pardon me, and then most of these schools are receiving renovated restrooms. This is just a picture of the renovated restrooms there at Rogers. Emerson Alternative, don't have a whole lot on Emerson Alternative. This picture was taken right around Thanksgiving, and you can see that they're getting ready to pour the slab, but if you've driven by there, you'll notice this week that they're actually putting the steel up, the steel structure. steel up, the steel structure for, for the new building. So this one's a, a little dated. Rockwood Elementary. This is a before picture of the backside and, uh, Rockwood received some new classrooms. And you can see how the architect worked to integrate the, the new classroom addition into the old building. Another shot. That was kind of dark, but you can see the, the addition that was put on there. And this is a good shot of the new front. This is a play area that was, that was placed there with the basketball goals and hard surface. And then the new parking. A lot of these older schools, uh, had inadequate parking, especially when it comes to handicapped access. So we've added at, uh, most of the schools, handicapped access and new parking. And then this, this also shows you some, some new paving. You can see where it gets darker about halfway up the picture and towards the top. That's all new paving back that way. So better circulation and more pork parking spots. This is a picture there at Rockwood of the waiting area outside of the administration And there's the renovated administration area. There's typical classroom renovation at Rockwood. And this is a tail end of construction picture, as I said, that come from our records, but this is the computer lab there at, at Rockwood. And you can see all the new computers that were put in there also.
David, I know this doesn't fall under your purview exactly, but we've got all these new computers and technology upgrades. Is there a process to replace those on an ongoing basis? Is, I mean, I, I guess that's a question we want to ask Superintendent Lopez.
It really is. That's a, a district question and a policy within the, within the school district. We are still working with them, especially with these schools of, of upgrading their, their networks and their, their phone system things, but as far as replacement, that's, that's really their call.
Okay.
So here's a renovated space, classroom. This is a little blurry, but I'd like to show you, this is the, the multipurpose room or cafeteria and area there at Rockwood before and then after. And because we're building a gym under the bond issue program, we were able to move the stage area out of this and, and enlarge the cafeteria. Some media center. Webster Middle School, I just, I believe it just had this one picture, but here's the renovated gymnasium. Taft Middle School, if you've driven by there, you've seen there's a whole lot going on there because of the stadium that's next to it. This is just a picture showing you the, the new elevator tower that's going in there to, to provide adequate access between floors for ADA. And this isn't a great picture, other than I wanted to show you that it's a new roof. It was taken during one of the snowstorms. We have a new roof and, and new, uh, heat and air units on top there that we've provided. This is a picture of the corridor, and this is actually unfinished. It looks great this way, but there's still glass to be put in and, and some other things. And again, this was taken around Thanksgiving. So they've had, uh, you know, five, six weeks to, to finish this up. This is the administration area. Class and SAS Phase Two. There were some things that we couldn't accomplish in the original Class and SAS project, so we broke it out into Phase Two. And there were some things that the district added and, and some things that, that we are doing. It's mostly centered around the administration area, but this is a picture of the new student parking area that was, uh, that was poured, I think, right before, well, obviously right around, uh, Thanksgiving is the date on this. Staff tells me that it should be ready about next week, so the kids won't be parking in the mud that was over there any longer. They'll be on the, on a nice new hard surface. Just a picture of the ongoing construction there at Class and SAS and the administration area. Jefferson Middle School is, uh, I, I think a pretty dramatic project as far as the changes made. If you've ever been to Jefferson Middle School, it is, it is a very, very large school. We're trying to do as much as we can out there, but this is just a picture showing you the, the new window replacements on one side of the, the building. And it may not seem like a big deal, but I'll show you this second picture. And this is out front in the, the gymnasium area that faces out on, onto Blackwelder. And you can see the condition and the old panels. I, I think those panels have been there since the, the 50s. And some of them are missing and they've been boarded up with, uh, with plywood and, and things. And that's the new windows that, that we put in. So a pretty dramatic change. This is a entry area there. It's during construction. The tile's been taken up, but you can see the, the general configuration. We added a, a second wall in there to give the, the airlock and second point of, of security. And you can see the, the new finishes. This is a before shot of the corridor and then a completed renovated corridor. Tile ceilings, paint, new, uh, window divisions. Again, another shot of the corridor there by the main administration area and then the new, new look. This is just one of the common areas during construction and there's the finished space. And there's a corridor still at Jefferson. This was the cafeteria at Jefferson before. This is back in June of, of 12. And then you can see the renovated space. This is the gymnasium. This is in that area where I was showing you the, the windows that were patched. And there's the renovated space. You can see the new windows there on the right. Another shot from the different direction. This is a locker room there at Jefferson. Original lockers that we just refurbished, painted, fixed, fixed dents, replaced parts. And then renovated the locker room itself. Classroom. John Rex. These pictures, um, are a little dated, but just want to go over them again. They were taken around Thanksgiving and, and as you know, driving by there, I'm sure you have, you can see that they've made substantial progress, although the weather is slowing them down a little bit, but you can see the, the, uh, work that they've done on Rex's corner. You know, now that that's all been filled with the insulation and some of it has been bricked. Inside shot of, of the work that's ongoing. Aerial shot from the parking garage. And I believe most of that has brick on it now that the gymnasium is completed as far as brick. And that's a shot looking at the corner of the gym, looking back to the east. Also, along with the, the tax projects, MAPS office has been tasked with doing a portion of the 2007 bond issue projects, which is, uh, classrooms and gymnasiums for, for schools. So just go over it real quick. We have, uh, 12 different groups of projects. And in those groups, there's between three and five schools. So Project One is complete. Project Two is partially complete. We have five school projects under construction. We had two stadiums under construction and two other project groups in design. Won't go through all these and, and bore you to death here, but in design is Group Seven, Group Eight, Group Two A. It's Two A because Nichols Hills Gym was broken out because of various reasons, but we're still working on, on getting that one out onto the street for bidding. And then complete is Coolidge, Van Buren, Hayes, Wheeler and Monroe is the partial from Group Two. Under construction, you can see the schools that are listed there along with Taft and Spiegel stadiums. And then projects that still are to be done in the near future. So just give you some quick update pictures here. Coolidge Elementary. You can see the new classrooms that were added there. This is the new gymnasium. This is one of the projects that obviously is completed. And there's the interior of the gymnasium. Shot from out on the playground of the gymnasium. Inside shot of the classroom. And this is all new construction. This isn't renovation. Van Buren Elementary, the new gymnasium. Classrooms. And the, uh, classroom finishes within Van Buren. There's the gymnasium at Van Buren. You can see why all, all the gymnasiums, while they're similar, they're, they're very different. You know, they're tailored to, to, obviously to the mascot, to the color schemes and different aspects. There's a shot of the corridor at Hayes Elementary. Bond Project Two. A lot of these are, are going to be pictures just under construction, just to show you the progress we're making, but there's West Nichols Hills. And, uh, Bond Project Three is Parmalee, Hillcrest and Pierce. Not a real exciting picture, but there's new, you know, roof type units, new roof on the structure. There's the, the gym under construction. And again, these pictures are a bit dated. You can see this one's dated in October, so there's been substantial, substantial work since that time. Here's Hillcrest Elementary. This is, uh, the gymnasium, but there's also classrooms at this. And there's a classroom under construction. Parmalee, construction just beginning. You see the footings that are being poured, getting ready to prepare for the slabs, plumbing's in. Project Four, several schools. There's Adams Elementary Gymnasium under construction. There's Bodine. See, they're getting ready to pour the slab. And again, that was in October, so I'm, I'm sure they're well beyond that and have walls coming up. Well, actually, there's a picture of the walls coming up. Horseman, there's a picture of some new paving that was put in. Again, it's all in construction, not completed, so it doesn't look perfect yet. Mark Twain Gymnasium under construction. Inside shot of the gym. Stan Waddy. And there's, uh, Putnam Heights, Tie and Steel, getting ready to put those in for the footings. Project Six, Buchanan, Gatewood, Johnson, Oak Ridge. See if they've got the footings in, getting ready to do the slabs. It's Buchanan. The walls are starting to come up on, looks like classrooms there. You can see the, uh, brick being put on the gymnasium at Gatewood Elementary. Johnson Elementary slab is poured. Again, this is around Thanksgiving. Oak Ridge Elementary. Taft Stadium Renovations. There's the original Taft Stadium and, and there's a lot of work being done out there. Really, the most I can show you right now is, is this. And this is the, the braces that were put in place to make sure that that old WPA wall stays. That is one of the main points that everybody had, is that wall needs to stay. So that's all I have. I just want to say how, how proud I am of staff, how hard they work and how much they take ownership of these projects for themselves. And it's great to work with, uh, some very talented architects and, and good contractors on this project.
Your Honor, uh, I've got a couple of questions for David. Um, did, uh, in the course of your, uh, work on all schools, you mentioned security one time. Did you all address security issues at schools where there's a master locking system or some way to?
Um, you, you know, that's really, uh, an issue that the, the district deals with, but we work with them if there's, there's issues. And that's, I believe, why some of those at the middle schools have the, the double doors is to help with that, not only weather, but also security. But that's really something that, that we leave in the hands of, of the district.
Uh, but did you, I, I asked my question is, when you all built the buildings and designed them, you provide for as much security as you could inherit in the building design?
Absolutely. You know, we, we don't want just wide open doors and things, so the architects work and, and they're trained somewhat to, to understand security issues within the schools.
And then a lot of your slides showed new lighting. Um, and is it correct to assume that, that you put in high efficiency lighting in all those areas?
I, I would assume that. I, I haven't really looked at the specs. I could ask our, our construction manager on that, but yes.
Okay. Then, and all the gyms at the, uh, elementary schools, well each elementary school in the system have a, a gymnasium now?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Now, when you designed the gymnasium, did you make provisions for access to the gymnasium without going through the school?
Without going through the school?
Yeah.
Yeah, most of the, the gymnasiums, in fact, I, I think probably all of them are separate structures. Some of them have corridors that connect, but they are separate structures. And I, I think part of that was to allow neighborhood activities to, to go on separate from the school building itself.
Good. Thank you, David.
Uh, David, I just want to take the time out to thank you and your staff for a job well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looks like we're good. David, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Is that it for senior manager reports?
That's it.
All right. Citizens to be heard. We have a couple of people that have signed up. I'll ask them to keep their comments to three minutes or less. Joe Sarge Nelson.
I'm Joe Sarge Nelson. All of y'all will know me already. Uh, gonna go off the beaten path here a little bit from last time I was here to comment to y'all and commend y'all on the MAPS project per se in content only. The people need these things badly. They just need me in a financial groove to get them done. But anyway, the average citizen of Oklahoma City, and excuse me ladies for saying it this way, has no idea just what the hell is going on at City Hall. The people of Oklahoma City had no idea that you, Mr. Mayor, were spending every other so-called week in New York and getting an MBA degree. At the NYU University up there and at educational cost of nearly $150,000, which I know education's high, so I'm not arguing that point. My question is, as a resident in Oklahoma City and a taxpayer, how are you living up there in New York? And why wasn't the public, per se, as our mayor, informed? And, uh, who so-called bankrolled this expensive adventure? Now, we have some fine colleges right here in Oklahoma City, but getting your master's degree or whatever it is that you got in New York and being vice president of Ackerman McQueen in the process and being a full-time mayor of Oklahoma City, that's too many jobs for one person doing not enough hours in a day to get it done. And wasn't this, as I've been putting this all together, about the same time that, lack of a better way of putting it, I'll just put it direct, that a 32-year relationship ended? And according to the article I read and checked it out, that, uh, your relationship, a running relationship with the Almighty, and they said the Christianity of Oklahoma City were inseparable. I do believe I read that exactly. And define, if you don't mind, how are they inseparable with all this other stuff going on? Then our city government allows a pornography across the street, which I brought up before, and that marks the very scriptures that you personally claim to revere. And yet you can't even muster, nobody seems to muster up enough to even make a comment about this play. And that just depresses me on City Hall. You talk about everything else, but you want to talk about the gooder stuff. And that's not leadership. That's not even Christian. Won't somebody stand up for it? And I think the one thing I saw in the city blog really bothered me, and this I'm going to nail tight. The Flaming Lips, a recent New York party group bragged to an approving crowd along with Yoka Ono. with Yoko Ono, the Beatles' former wife, that you often smoke pot in your living room. That is a matter of record. Then your paid stooge, in my opinion, Steve Hill, who was the former David Walters stooge, said that you had never done illegal drugs. Well, just what the heck is marijuana if it's not illegal? Really, what is the story going on here? There's only eight weeks until the election. And would you consider having some debates in public?
Sarge, the timing is good. Your time is up.
I kind of figured it. That's what you do to me every time. Apparently, I usually gouge the right people at the right time. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, council, city manager, on a positive note, there's a transportation change that some of you may be aware of that's going on in Oklahoma City now. And it's not the street car. It's not with Amtrak. But we have three passenger trains coming to Oklahoma City in February. This is being done by a combined effort of the Stillwater Central Railways, which is an Oklahoma corporation, Watco Industries in Kansas, and the Iowa Pacific Holding Company in Omaha, Nebraska. They had 1,000 tickets for three trips to bring people from the Tulsa area to Oklahoma City. One of these trains is for a Thunder game. They have probably some of the finest coaches in America. There'll be five-star dining aboard. It's not cheap. It's pretty expensive. But they've sold 1,000 tickets to do this. And this is just a harbinger of things to come. This is really, really interesting, I think. Iowa Pacific Holding Company said they could run eight trains a day between Tulsa and Oklahoma City. Eight trains a day, probably with some kind of rail diesel car just shuttling people back and forth. Right now, the route's fairly slow, but it's being improved. The goal is to get it up to probably somewhere around an hour to an hour-twenty turnaround time between downtown Tulsa and downtown Oklahoma City. While I say that they're coming to Oklahoma City, but that's not quite accurate. They're having to stop in Midwest City. They will have four tour buses available in Midwest City to haul people from Midwest City to downtown Oklahoma City. Because as the way things stand right now, we're not able to get into Bricktown or to the transportation hub. And I'm absolutely delighted, and you know I've been working with these transportation issues for many years, and I'm delighted at the progress that we're making on the transportation of the old Santa Fe Station. And the sooner we can get that open, the better it's going to be. I was doing just a quick calculation of the number of people that we've had in the Santa Fe Station since Amtrak has come back to Oklahoma City. Given the passengers, their relatives or friends who may have taken them to the station or picked them up, we've had over 1 million people pass through that facility since 1996. Over 1 million. For a long time, we kept people down what they used to call the dungeon down in the basement. It was a pitiful situation, especially when you go to Fort Worth and they have this great big bright beautiful hub, and we're keeping people in the basement. Well, we're doing better today. But what I want to strongly suggest to the council and to the mayor and to the city manager is that we do everything possible to get people in that building as soon as practical. Because the more people we get in it, the more we do, the more ownership people are going to take of that facility, and the more they're going to feel like, well, again, it's ownership. They feel like this is part of Oklahoma City, this is part of what we're doing, and we want to be here. Even, there's people have approached me about the possibility of even opening up a coffee shop or the newsstand. You know, when you go into the station, there's this big photograph of the station. That used to be a newsstand area, and it would be ideal for a coffee shop. Another thing that I think would work great is that Amtrak has a depot host program. This is an all voluntary program. It doesn't cost the city anything. They take people, usually retired people have some railroad experience. They vet them, they train them, and they bond them to help passengers when they come in, so somebody will be there instead of having to have paid staff. They have a depot host program in Norman. You go pick up the train in Norman in the morning, they always have a fresh pot of coffee on. They're there to help answer questions. If anybody, you know, needs physical help, they're there to help. They do the same thing in Paul's Valley. Ardmore and Gainesville has a very active depot host program. And Mr. Mayor, since you're officially connected with Amtrak, I think this would be something that would really benefit Oklahoma City and get this moving as soon as possible. I'd like to see Oklahoma City set up a meeting with the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad, Union Pacific, and see what we can do as soon as possible to start getting these trains from Midwest City into either Bricktown. We could do a temporary platform at the police station or in back of the ACOG building until such times we can get the trestle repaired and, you know, get into the Santa Fe Station. But we have a great opportunity right now. I've been working with them for the past year on this project, and it's very exciting. And like I say, there's 1,000 people initially that signed up to do this. And they want to run event trains to Oklahoma City. And the thing I want to emphasize is this is from Tulsa area to Oklahoma City. You know, we're bringing them here for our events, for our programs. And again, I'm just absolutely delighted with the direction that the transportation hub's going. I think, you know, once we get set up where we can handle more passengers, it'll be great for events in Bricktown. And it eliminates a lot of parking. I mean, 100, 300 cars each time one of these things runs. So anyway, thank you very much and good job.
Thanks, Bob. And that'll do it. We're adjourned.